Okay, time is 6:01. We're gonna call this October Regular Board Meeting to Order. That don't sound right. October already flying by. Mr. Schmidt, would you lead our invocation, please?
Hello. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together. And my Father, we just ask that you bless this meeting and bless the teachers, staff, all the folks, all the students. And just, Father, we just ask you to lay your hand on them during this tough time. And, Father, give us the wisdom to get through this and learn from it and be able to benefit later. In your name we ask, amen.
If you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seen. First item on the for business tonight is approval of agenda. Dr. Townsend, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
We do. We're requesting to amend the agenda to remove the action item 9C, approval of personnel. There are no personal actions to be considered at this time. Also requesting to add the approval of an out-of-state field trip for Pickens High School girls' basketball to a champion basketball tournament on December 21st and 23rd, 2020, in Panama City Beach, Florida. And I've got the details in front of you now, so in case you want to review that as well. I'm delighted to answer any questions regarding that.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. That addition will be section 9, item G. With that, here a motion to approve. The agenda is amended.
A motion.
Pushed by Mr. Schmidt. To her second.
I'll second.
Taken by Ms. Finley. Any further discussion? All in favor? For and unopposed, agenda is approved. Section 5, recognition. Ms. Destiny Shutt, we have a special recognition tonight. Would you come forward and do the honors, please?
Hey, y'all. My name is Emma Long, and I'm here proudly representing Pickens County, Georgia.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Emma Long, a senior at Pickens High School and the daughter of Greg and Aunt Ma. Tonight, we are honoring her as Georgia's FFA State President. Some of her greatest achievements that we've recognized previously included a national award for job interviewing skills, displaying her vocal talents in front of state dignitaries, and winning the National FFA Convention Talent Contest. Emma's interest in FFA began when Mr. Todd Dobson invited her to participate as part of the livestock judging team as a sixth grader at JMS. She had already been showing market lambs and breeding ewes since third grade. It was in middle school, however, that Emma realized FFA was much more than animals and a variety of things to do was limitless. Over the course of time, Emma has owned too many animals to count. She currently has about 20 head of sheep on her small operation and has had about seven show pigs over the course of her high school career. She loves both species and believes in everything the livestock program teaches our youth. FFA has provided Emma with countless experiences which have impacted her life and her goals as she plans for the future. Emma's career goal is to be an ag teacher. She has begun applying for college scholarships and as the Georgia FFA State President, has already learned super valuable lessons about working with others. The things she has learned thus far into her term as State President have already allowed her to be more comfortable in her own skin and also effectively communicate with students and adults alike. FFA has also provided her the opportunity to make amazing connections, from Byron Tuller, a lobbyist for private ag companies and farmers who works in the capital every day, all the way to Governor Brian Kemp and his wife, Marty. And while these connections and many more in the industry are great, Emma says that one of her most treasured connections includes her seven new best friends on the state officer team. The FFA organization benefits young people in many different ways. For Emma, it pushed her out of her comfort zone. Emily Leonard, past South Region State Vice President, shared in her retirement address, "There is no growth in a comfort zone and no comfort in a growth zone." Emma believes that is why FFA is so important. It gives students from every walk of life the opportunity to learn and grow. Georgia was just recently fully affiliated and is one of the top five states in the nation with an active FFA organization. Emma says that FFA is a home to every student that walks through the doors of an ag classroom. That home aspect is why FFA is so beneficial to students, because even when you graduate, you are still part of the FFA family. I have been fortunate enough to watch this outstanding young lady grow up since she entered Tate Elementary School as a kindergartner. One of my favorite memories is watching a confident little girl walk onstage and belt out "The Clown" by Miley Cyrus during Mrs. Hazel's talent showcase as students waited to go to class in the mornings, or seeing her work alongside her parents to make sure her animals were ready to show in Perry. Emma has a work ethic like no other young person I know. Emma, you may be a small-town girl from Pickens County, but you're full of big dreams, motivation, and drive. And always know that no matter where life takes you, we will always be proud to call you our hometown girl. Tonight, on behalf of the Pickens County Board of Education, I would like to encourage you to never stop believing and pursuing your goals and dreams. Congratulations to the 2020-2021 Georgia FFA State President proudly representing Pickens County, Ms. Emma Long. Mr. Tim Bayston, who is our CTA B Director, if you will come up with Emma along with her mom, Anne, for FFA.
Yes, we're gonna get Emma's last one, too.
You can speak.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I guess that the biggest thing I'd like to say is thank y'all so much for this tonight. I definitely was not expecting my song to be played when I came in, so that was a surprise for sure. But I'm just so excited for this year. And I just, I've made seven new best friends this year already, and they are fantastic to work with. And even though our year definitely looks a lot different than what it normally would, we are taking it the best way we can, and we are making the most out of it, because it is our year. And at the end of the day, I wouldn't want it any other way. So I'm just super excited for the opportunity, and thank you guys so much.
And her dad is not here this evening because he's already in Perry, preparing for her fall show that starts this weekend.
Ms. Long, do you want to join us? We need somebody else to take pictures.
I'll take it.
Moms are recorded. Yeah. I think it's okay. Less than 15 minutes, right?
Right.
Congratulations. Now, Phil, I'm glad you had to follow up. Congratulations, Ms. Long. Thank you for being here. Good luck this weekend. If your track record holds up, you'll probably be being recognized by us in a few months again, probably. So congratulations. Next section, section 6, Board Vacancy Process. Mr. Landrum, you gonna give us a little overview and update on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we talked in the last meeting, the local act provides for the board you to appoint the replacement for Ms. Youngblood. At that meeting, y'all set a deadline that expired last week. The applicants ran. There were three, three people that applied for the position. One was found not to be in district, so there were two for your consideration. It would be appropriate at some point in the meeting for you entertaining or filled up vacancies.
Thank you very much, Mr. Landrum. It's, I believe, our first item of business, direction items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, section 7, East Bloss presentation. Dr. Townsend?
Yes, sir. We're gonna pull up a PowerPoint real quick. We just want to kind of get the information out, what the East Bloss is. As you know, we're not gonna either promote it, say yes or whether you ask for it, or can't say don't vote. Yeah, no vote, of course. But we do want to kind of let everybody know kind of what we've done in the past, what we plan on in the future. And if they have any questions, please contact us. We are speaking to groups around the county regarding that as well. So we're, we are excited about the East Bloss referendum coming up November 3rd, unless you're early vote. Okay, the first part, basically, I'm not gonna read bullet for you. It talks about this is not a new tax. It is a continuation of a one sentence sales tax that we've done. It's a continuation. It helps us with the bottom line at times when you buy things such as buses, one-on-one technology, which we have. Last year, we had from second grade through 12th grade. Now it's K, now it's K-12. So we're excited about how that East Bloss monies helps us not spend the general fund monies. And so that helps at the end of the day with the bottom line. And as you know, this year, we lowered the militerate again to 14.83. So we're excited about that. Those kind of things that we want to make sure people understand, there are certain things that we need in this East Bloss if the community votes for it. We'll talk about that as well. You'll see first, some of the projects were made. You see the kids in action. They're actually using the auditorium now. If you have not been in there, you need to do it. As soon as we can hold an open house, we definitely want you guys and the rest of the community at that open house to really show off the renovations of Pickens Junior High School. We're definitely proud of that. You see the media center in use. We're excited about, you notice, the kids are reading. Of course, they read on their Chromebooks and their phones, special phones. But they're actually reading books, too. So I think we're all excited about, and soon, I know most of us like to read books. I know you're reading a book for the meeting. So I think a lot of you out there like to read books as well. And we still want to encourage that, our kids, our students, to read books in this media center. This library is really nice for everybody to look at and really use. Our kids get to use it. Just more pictures of the hallways, how it turned out. You see the wider hallways, the nice renovations. One of the things you want to do with, when you renovate a building, too, you don't need to build a new school just to build a new school. Just have something shiny and new. If you can renovate something and make it last another 15, 20 years, that's what you can do. It's a better way to spend the money, the taxpayers' money. So that's one of the things, planning that went into PJ, really, everybody did a good job preparing for it, and the outcomes were nice as well. You see the projects we've had at the high school. You see the first picture shows where the STEM Center is now. We have engineering out there. You have broadcast video and sports medicine. So you have Coach Rasko, Ms. Quarles out there teaching. We serve a lot of students out there. Engineering is one of those things we're thinking about expanding. We really want the community input. We're thinking about, you'll hear about in a few minutes, about the College Career Academy concept we're doing, a school within school model. And do our kids need that next level of engineering, such as Megatronics or industrial systems, to where we can get a kid to be in that, live in Jasper, and then be able to work within 45 miles, but he was trained in Jasper and able to raise a family in Jasper and not have to move away to raise a family to make a living. So that's one of the things we're looking at, really pulling our resources, working with partners, using East Bloss, working with our current budget, and using that $3 million grant we'll talk about in a few minutes, for continuing the progress we're making now. You'll see other pictures, too, up there. The football field's nice. It's a multi-use facility. Other organizations besides just the high school used it, the junior highs used it, the recreation leagues have used it. So we're proud of that. The one in the middle on the right-hand side, you'll see, it looks like just a hitting facility for softball and baseball. That's great. Gender equity is supportive. Guys and girls practicing in there. That's really nice. But when the pandemic hit, band couldn't play their instruments inside. We didn't have those socks or those coverings at this time to allow band to really practice indoors with those wind instruments. So they got together, Mr. Oob and the coaches, and bands started practicing in the hitting facility. So it's a multi-use facility where it can be used for many things besides just baseball and softball. And the East Bloss helped build that. And then, of course, the baseball softball field, which is nice as well. More progress. You see the one technology that really helped us out last spring when everybody had to go home. And again, we were expanding that K-2 now, I mean, K-12. You see the buses there, and you see the kid on the bus as well, getting on that. We have safe buses. We update them. We keep them fresh. We have air conditioning in them as well. So transportation, anytime of transportation, I mean, that's the highest commodity we have for our kids. That's why we're here every day, to serve our kids. And we want to provide a safe transportation model for them as well. Looking ahead, we've got some plans, of course, with the new ag facility. Emma, unfortunately, you won't be able to see that as a student, but hopefully later on, as a community member you will, if this East Bloss passes. That'll be a nice ag center rebuilt at the high school. We're looking at doing a smaller version at the junior high as well, with the competition still happening at the high school. We want to renovate the schools, all the schools, the elementary schools, middle school, junior high, high school, need updating. They need renovating. LED lights, new flooring, HVAC systems. So there's quite a few things we need to do. Of course, continue with the bus upgrades every year, order new buses. We order six a year to keep a nice, strong, and safe fleet. The one-on-one technology. All that's important. And you see the other things as well, is why we're asking for this East Bloss. That's why board members, you chose to ask the public to support us and do that. So again, we're not telling you to vote for it. We're just telling you what we've done well in the past. You've had some good people here who really monitored and really watched what we've done with the East Bloss and kept track of it. And that's what's important. Keep us accountable on how we spend the money. That's really important. Do that in the future as well. Of course, you see a lot of kid picks using some of our facilities. You see the bottom left with the electricians there. Those kids are learning in an ag environment about wiring, so they can wire a house. That's important. So there's different things we can do with East Bloss money to really get our kids ready for that 21st century workforce as well. You see music going on, all sorts of activities. The little ones can benefit from it as well. You see more pictures there, of course. Really proud of our students, proud of our athletes, proud of our band members, proud of our elementary students. We want to support them, of course, if you so choose to do that with the East Bloss. Have any questions, please reach out to me, reach out to Tony. Tony's been here for a long time, longtime community member, such as Destiny as well. They understand what we've done in the past. I've read about it. They lived through it. You're playing well. Please ask all of us, Stacy, anybody else, if you have any questions, let us know. If you want us to speak to a group or anybody else, or board members, if you'd like any of us to reach to anybody else, let us know. And either all three of us, or one or two of us will go out there and speak to anybody about the East Bloss. Again, we won't tell them which way to vote. We can't do that. But we just want to tell them the facts and answer any questions that we can, so they can make a decision on November 3rd or during early voting. Do y'all have any questions? And this is something we've already showed to the Rotary Club. The Chamber has supported these possibilities. They had the Rotary sitting there supporting it as well, endorsing it. And so just let us know. And we're going out next Tuesday night to the Republican Group. I believe Tony and Destiny will be speaking to them Tuesday night, and the Optimus Club as well next week. So if y'all have any questions for either me or the rest of the staff regarding the upcoming East Bloss or presentations, you'll see the brochures as well. Y'all have those. If a meeting needs extra ones, if anybody wants these, just let us know. And we just appreciate your support. And Chairman, that's it this time.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. Good update. East Bloss money, at East Bloss has been a great asset to our school district, so we appreciate that. Let it bring us down to your reports. Dr. Townsend?
Yes, sir. I want to start off with the Growing Readers presentation. Anita, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Well, Dr. Townsend mentioned reading just a few minutes ago in his presentation. Well, we have some exciting news for you tonight in regards to reading. We became part of the Growing Readers Program last fall. And it started out in early fall with some professional development for our teachers. And we worked with Kathy Cobb, or more, I guess I should say she works with us, from RISA, in conjunction with GOSA for this program. And Kathy trained our teachers. She trained our academic coaches, and they're gonna come on in a little bit and tell you more about this program. But she wanted us to start in baby steps. And one thing that I loved was that the teachers, once they got in and started implementing this, they were like, "Give me more, give me more." And Kathy would say, "Well, you know, we can do a little bit more, but let's wait till the next training session." So just a few weeks ago, we had our third training session with the teachers and the academic coaches. And I'm gonna let Ms. Anne Long from Tate and Ms. Shelley Youngblood from Harmony Elementary, they're the academic coaches, they do a wonderful job supporting the teachers in all instructional aspects, but especially in this Growing Readers. When Kathy Cobb is not in the school helping the teachers, they rely on these folks right here. Ms. Rhonda Lane was planning on being here tonight, and something happened. She's the academic coach at Hill City, so she couldn't be here. But I do want to acknowledge her good work as well. All right, ladies?
I know I told you that Mark O'Witt played. Do y'all want?
Oh, you got it. Okay. Pardon. Good job.
So the goal of Growing Readers is to increase the number of students reading on grade level by the end of third grade. The initiative is to provide high-quality professional learning for teachers in grades K through 3. And we, the professional development has been phenomenal. As academic coaches, we get to be a part of it. Our teachers get to be a part of it. RISA comes in after we have the training and supports us in the classroom. They model. They watch the teachers and provide coaching, and also coach us how to coach them. Based on our 2019 Pickens County Milestones data, we had 54% of our fourth graders who left elementary school and were not reading at proficient levels. So for this reason, we wanted to take advantage of this grant. In the elementary classrooms, if you visit any of our schools, you're going to find during the ELA block, students engaged in independent reading. Those students are gonna be reading a book that is a just-right fit for them. It'll be on their level. And while they're reading, you will see the teacher just dropping in, sit beside the student, have them read a portion of the book to her, and then she'll start asking them questions. And while she's doing this, she is trying to, first she finds something they're doing really well, and compliments them on a strategy that they're using as a good reader. And then she pinpoints an area that she can help them grow. And on the spot, she can give them a new strategy. The teacher will model that strategy using the student's book or a mentor text, then have the student practice that. And then the student goes off to continue practicing for the next week or two weeks until the teacher conferences with them again. And the kids love that. When we go in the rooms, they will actually come to us and say, "Can I read to you? Can I read to you?" It doesn't matter who comes in the room, any adult, they want to read to them. So to determine their reading level for independent reading, we use a variety of assessment tools. And we are looking for the student to be able to read the text at 96% accuracy and also demonstrate the ability to comprehend that text. And then we get a level, but we're careful not to level the child. We don't say, "You're a D." We just will then tell them, "You might look at books in this range." So we give them a range, and they get to self-select. And they will choose five or six books, put it in a little book bag, and that's their bag, until they're ready to trade those books out.
I think it's important to understand also that with Growing Readers, this is the most, the most fundamental way to differentiate that we have, because we are literally differentiating for every single student based on their individual needs. So, you know, we are, we are pinpointing little Sally over here, and what she needs is completely different from this child over here. And we're able to meet their needs right where they are. And while we're doing all of this, we are constantly assessing our students, and we're able to move them. So it's no longer keeping a student in a group, you know, for a month, or a unit, or a topic at a time. When you're ready to move, we let you move. And so students are constantly moving. It's fluid. It's flexible. Students are getting what they need. You can see here on this slide that we have a couple of examples of what the reading levels may look like. So the reading levels, like she said, are based from, it's actually pre-A, which is before A, but go all the way to Z. So a Level A example would be very simplistic, very repetitive, lots of repetitions. And there is a Little S that you can see is much more complex. So, and it just keeps going higher and higher from there. So at any given time, when you come into our classrooms, you're going to see these students reading books. You will be amazed if you ever come to our kindergarten classrooms and you walk in and it's completely silent, and little children are just scattered all over the room, just reading their books or looking at their, you know, their alphabet or their colored words or whatever. But they are truly enjoying themselves, being able to sit down and have time to read. It's no longer you have to read. It's more you get to read. And I think that they, they find joy in that, in the ability to be able to have that choice and to be able to read for enjoyment, and not just because you have to, because it's cool. So in kindergarten, we start off trying on the low end, because we do have to work up their stamina to be able to read for a long, you know, for a period of time. So in kindergarten, we start off the year expecting to have them reading for seven minutes at a time that's uninterrupted. And by the end of kindergarten, they're reading for a full 20-minute stretch at a time. And like I said, it's unbelievable until you actually come and see it for yourself, you know, five-year-olds that can sit down and read for that period of time. So you can see the ranges that go through there. And by third and fourth grade, we have students who are enjoying reading for up to 45-minute stretches at a time in the classroom. And it's not just, it is no longer, because I know back in the day, we used to have something called Dear Time, where the teacher would actually read during that time as well. So the students were reading, the teachers were reading. But now we have, the students are reading, and the teacher gets up and goes and sits individually with students during this 45-minute time. And that's when they're differentiating and teaching those reading strategies that they need to know to be successful and to become better So how, how many books do the students read? Anne mentioned that our students have bookbags, and that they keep their, their choice books in those bookbags. And then after they've read those books, they get to go shop for more books. And it's just a continuous process. So each child, if you look at the levels there, like an A through K, which would be first, I mean, kindergarten, first, second grade, are going to be reading around 12 to 15 books a week. And then it goes all the way up to when you have the upper grades around R to Z. They're reading between, between one to four books. And the reason is because in the lower levels, you have the more simplistic text, you have picture books and things like that, and you can read those. You can get through those a lot faster. By the time you're in the upper elementary schools, you're reading chapter books, you're reading, you know, biographies and things like that. So those books take longer to get through. So you're not necessarily going to be able to read 15-chapter books in a week, you know. So that's the difference in, in the range there. Expected growth, I met with Dr. Townsend today and looked at Harmony's data, and we talked about expected growth is to grow about a level a month. But of course, that changes the higher up you go, because you're learning more skills. It's no longer just, it's no longer just decoding, you know, you're learning comprehension skills that go along with that. So it takes a little bit longer. And I think it's also important to understand that when we are, when we're talking about months, we're not talking about a true month, because December and November are cut short for us. So you're not expected to grow, you know, from, from an A to a B in November. It would actually take a November and December before you grew that extra. So we're looking more at weeks instead of, instead of months. And I think it's also important to understand that when we're talking about months, we're not talking about a true month because December and November are cut short for us. So you're not expected to grow, you know, from an A to a B in November. It would actually take November and December before you grew that extra. So we're looking more at weeks instead of just months. So to end up, we are just looking at some pictures of growing readers in action and some quotes that we have. So, and this is real life. Last year, we had some third graders who wanted to skip recess. They just begged, please, let us just stay in and just read. And the teachers are excited, you know, their kids are coming to them begging to read. Again, it is not all about, you know, you have to read this book, it's about you get to. And so in the upper left-hand corner, you see that our student, every classroom has a classroom library that has books ranging from A to Z. And with the professional development, we also received books that came with that. And then you also see teachers conferencing and you see our students enjoying reading. And that is all.
Thank you. You have any questions?
Any questions?
That was a great update, I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Walker, for all your hard work on that. I know you've been juggling a lot during our COVID world, so thank you for that. And I can vouch for our academic coaches. We have some strong ones. Ms. Rhonda Lane was one of the strongest teachers I ever had. And Ms. Youngblood was one of the strongest teachers my sister Peyton ever had, and her mother, Ms. Arndell. And we never had Ms. Long, but I think Emma speaks volumes for you. So we have some strong academic coaches, so thank you for all that.
And Ms. Holloway also works with Growing Readers.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Holloway.
Yeah, Chair, I agree. We've got some outstanding academic coaches and it just really helps the road we want to make, they're going to help us get there. So we appreciate you guys and thank you. Next, we have a financial update from our CFO, Amy Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. If you'll go to general fund final June 2020. Just wanted to bring our final FY '20 numbers to U.S. Promise last month. Our general fund revenue collection through the end of the fiscal year was 100.3% and our expenditures were 96.67%. That's a great place to be. We underspent our budget. We are actually able to carry over into FY '21 about a million and a half dollars. And as you know, we had about a $2 million deficit that we were going to dig into our fund balance. Well, here's a million and a half to help cover that, so we'll just roll it directly into FY '21. The second piece that really helped us is that tax digest, the growth in the digest. That produced another 600,000. So together, we have covered the predicted shortfall that we would have. So we're in an excellent place. I'm really pleased with how the year ended. Do y'all have any questions about FY '20? You should have received your audit report for FY '19. I'm planning in three years right now. We actually have FY '20's audit that started this week, too. We just got '19 closed, but did everyone receive your FY '19 report? Okay. But we have started the federal portion, it's a compliance portion, they have picked Title I in special education. So we are gathering lots of information for them and have that actively running already. Our FY '21 general fund revenue collection through the end of September is 5.96% and expenditures are 15.58% of the approved budget. And if you will go to the SLOSS report. SLOSS revenue for September was, hold on to your hats, $801,36.64. That is the highest collection we have ever had in Pickens County. Checked with a few other northern, North Georgia counties, they had a similar, we have one county over a million, I think Dawson was over a million, Gilmar was over 900,000. None of us know why, but spend local, keep doing what you're doing because we really appreciate that and it will help with the future SLOSS plans that we have. The interest earned for the month was $1,720.47. Expenditures totaled $794,734.50. And our month-end SLOSS balance was $5,740,137.35. That brings our 12-month average to $506,196.14. So that is continuing to, on an upswing. If I can find out from the Department of Revenue of what, where that golden egg came from, I will let you know because I'd like to keep doing whatever it was. But several counties, we've talked to several counties in North Georgia, and we all did receive that golden egg this month. So we don't know if it was backlog from COVID collections possibly, but you know, the past three, four, or five months, we have had increased collections. So we'll keep putting that money in the bank and doing good things with it. As always, I'm going to report we have no debt. This is the end of the quarter, and so we will, we did include the school activities accounts report. It is a review of the first quarter of this fiscal year for the school activity accounts at each school. It shows their beginning balance for the year, their receipts so far, and dispersments so far, and that actually is through September 30th and what their current balance is. The blank three you see will be the next three quarters for the year. Do y'all have any questions? That's all I have, Dr. Townsend.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have our COO, Mr. Stacy, go ahead.
Pretty short report tonight. Got a lot of things going on in the schools with our maintenance staff and all, they're doing a good job. We hired a new HVAC tech y'all approved a couple of weeks ago. He started and doing a great job, got a great personality, seems to fit him well, brings a wealth of knowledge and experience from hospitals to school systems. So he's a great benefit. Have a new plumber that y'all approved Thursday night, that will start Monday. Got a great wealth of knowledge, too. Excited to have him on board, get him in here, get him working. Transportation, train class, getting us two new sub-drivers, which is a blessing. We need them. We're, it's that time of year where we're getting a lot of absentees and it's really stressing us out out there right now. But we're working to try to get a few more people in. We've actually started our skills assessment with all the drivers and they should be completed by the end of October. And what that is, we bring everybody in one at a time and they have to answer some questions and tests and show us how to inspect the bus and all, just to make sure they're still up to snuff and doing their job right because, you know, we have to inspect our bus every morning before they crawl in, every evening before they crawl in. So it's important that we do these things. Food service, Beth brought us a little news this week. End of October, October 31st, I think, we have to do our final count on FTE and free and reduce and all that. Well, free and reduce is lacking now. We're way behind, we're about double what we normally are right now behind. We usually have two or 300 or a couple of hundred behind, we're over 400 behind, not turning in their forms. This now, this comes from the COVID, I'm sure. Kids at home doing virtual, that's a big part of it. The government is now feeding them free, so they feel like they don't have to fill that form out. But when that ends, they're going to be full of pay if they don't fill these forms out. So we're working really hard to contact these kids. Beth calling them now. We're going to give her some additional staff to make these calls and beg these people to fill them out. It's just a piece of paper. If they fill it out and get it back in, and they actually come back into school, then they'll have their free or reduced meal prices. So, you know, it's a benefit and we've got to get this out to people that it's, we're not trying to be mean to them or anything like that. It's just a form we need filled out to, it's a lot of money for the school system, too. It really is to food service. And she, we don't pay her, we don't give her any money out of the general fund budget. But this is a way that we may have to if we don't get all this stuff in here. So we've got to work toward that. Any other? No good.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, just an announcement that we were notified last week that we're receiving a $10,000 innovation grant from Technic System, Georgia, TCSG. Basically, that's going to help us get the community, get a facilitator here at Pickens County to help us light that $3 million grant. We'll be applying for it next year, whether it's through the state legislature or whether it's through TCSG. They haven't decided what the process, the grant's going to look like, the grant process looks like next year. But we have to do a lot of legwork before that processing begins. We have to get the community input, stakeholders input here, teachers, admin, board members, strong partners, and really find out where we want to go with that school, with the school model, and then go for the grant. So I'm excited to let you know that we did receive that innovation grant. And we're glad to entertain any questions regarding that. We are going to Morgan County in November, it's that first Thursday, I believe it's November 5th, to check out their college curriculum. They have a single high school, a few less students than we have in Pickens County, but they have a college curriculum, school with the school model, and they do a good job. So if anyone would like to go see that and actually let us know, we can arrange that as well. We are taking a small group to Morgan County to check it out and then really get with the steering committee and start working. Any questions regarding that? Exciting times, though.
Great news, congratulations. Okay, thank you, Dr. Townsend, and stand for those reports. Bring us down to section nine, action items. First action item on the agenda is the District Two board vacancy that Mr. Landrum updated us on earlier. I will entertain a motion for a nominee or appointment, selection of appointment.
I'd like to make a motion that Erin Holland be chosen to replace the vacancy that we have.
A motion and a second, sorry, had a motion and a second, motion by Ms. Finley and a second by Mr. Smith to select Erin Holland to serve in District Two for the remainder of the term that was vacated by Ms. Youngblood. Motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Four and none opposed? That appointment is approved for Mr. Erin Holland to serve out the remainder of the District Two term. Second action item, action item B is approval of financial reports that Ms. Smith went over tonight. Do I hear a motion to approve those financial reports as presented? Pushed by Mr. Smith, do I hear a second?
Second.
Think by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor? Four and none opposed, those financial reports are approved. Item C, approval of easement with Georgia Power. We're doing a lot of business with Georgia Power here, and it looks like the third month in a row we've had it.
That's really the same property, they just changed.
They keep changing. This is the West Church Street, the, I think it's $5,000, $6,000. Do I hear a motion to approve this easement with Georgia Power? Pushed by Mr. Smith, do I hear a second?
Second.
Think by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor? Four and none opposed, that is approved. Okay, item D is policies for board review. We have six policies for consideration. All six of these policies were discussed at our workshop last week. We have, just quickly, six policies. One is equal opportunity employment, sexual harassment of employees, equal educational opportunities, sexual harassment of students, student health services, and medication. All these, all six are requests for revision of those policies. We're able to vote for all of them in one item. And this will be placed on the table for 30 days. Do I hear a motion to approve those policies? Pushed by Mr. Smith, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor? Four and none opposed, that is approved. Item E, approval of minutes. We have minutes to approve for the September 10th called meeting and regular board meeting, September 24th called meeting, September 30th called meeting, and the October 2nd work session. Everybody's had a chance to review those. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Mr. Smith, do I hear a second?
Second.
Think by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor? Four and none opposed, those are approved, Ms. Morton. Item F, we have one surplus item for special ed, it is a outdated TV for vision impairment. Do I hear a motion to approve that surplus?
I want to read that motion.
Motion by Ms. Finley, do I hear a second? Think by Mr. Smith, any further discussions? All in favor? Four and none opposed, that surplus is approved. And the added, the additional action item, item G, approval of a PHS girls' basketball out-of-state field trip. This is for December, play some games, play a tournament at Panama City Beach. Any questions on field trips? Do I hear a motion to approve that?
I don't have that much.
Pushed by Ms. Ennis, do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Four and none opposed, that field trip is approved. Or comments, any more comments? None being, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Pushed by Mr. Smith, do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor? Four and none opposed, we're adjourned at 6:47. Thank you all very much, have a great evening.